Begin with the flag pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to call the roll, Beth?
Commissioner Schlongen, Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Pop.
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski.
Here.
Commissioner Heinon.
Here.
Prove or amend the agenda?
We have no changes.
I'll move to approve the agenda as per done.
Motion's been made in second to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Announcements by the board. County board meetings are broadcast live and video recorded on YouTube. Please restrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that viewers can hear you, can hear you. The county board observes the Robert's rules of order for its meetings, so please obtain the board's chair consent before addressing the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for the open forum segment or public hearing. However, public comments on the agenda, on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the board chair. As we begin today's meetings, please turn off your cell phones to vibrate. Thank you. Open forum. Anybody back there?
No.
Okay, so then we have the consent agenda. We have consent agenda items one through five. Does anybody wish for any of these to be pulled for further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second to approve the consent agenda, items one through five. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Monty.
Mr. Chair, Amanda has this item for us.
Morning, Amanda.
Good morning.
Good to see you again.
It's very nice to see you again. Good morning, Chair and county commissioners. This morning, I have invited Heidi Pepper from Stantec to present some information on the Brownfields Assessment Grant Application Proposal that she's proposing for Benton County. Back in July, we released a request for proposal to seek out qualified environmental consultants to provide grant application assistance to obtain federal funding to further the county and BP's efforts for Brownfield redevelopment throughout the county. The impetus behind this was there's, we've worked on a couple of projects throughout the county and, and lost a couple of projects in the county because of some Brownfield and MPCA issues. So, as a matter of being proactive, you know, we put this proposal together so that we could seek out qualified firms to help us with some grant application assistance. And the grant application is a process and something that I'm not necessarily familiar with, writing a federal grant. So hiring a consultant to do the work to, that has been successful at doing it is, you know, one of those things that it helps us secure a successful grant. So, the proposal that was released in July, closed on July 30th, we received one proposal. We've sent it out to multiple different firms, so we received one proposal from Stantec. So Heidi Pepper is here to provide, to review her proposal and answer any questions that you have regarding the Brownfield Assessment Grant Application and Program. So she's going to do a quick review of the program, identify the funding mechanisms and the amount of grant dollars that are available, and then go into her proposal. So I'll turn it over to Heidi, and she has a presentation already up and ready to go, and let me know if you have any questions.
Okay.
Great, thank you, Amanda. Again, nice to meet you, county commissioners. I don't think I've met any of you before. Heidi Pepper, as Amanda said, I work with Stantec. I'm not an engineer or an architect. I'm a funding specialist. So I help communities like Benton County and your local governments find money for their infrastructure projects. As Amanda said, there is a US EPA, which is the Environmental Protection Agency. They have a series of Brownfield grant programs because of the issue that Amanda described. You have parcels where there's either known or suspicious contamination, and they're a little leery, and understandably so in moving forward with that. So that's the goal of the EPA Assessment Grant Program, which is the one that we're proposing to pursue for Benton County, where you take an inventory and assess the properties and identify which ones are clean and which ones do need further investigation. So you can take away and build some more confidence in those sites that are clean, or take away the environmental concerns for those that are not. So again, as Amanda said, I'm going to just do an overview of this grant program, the eligible uses of those funds, Stantec's proposal, the roles that you all can play, that we would play, and then answer any questions that you might have. So now, there we go. So what is a Brownfields? It is real property and the redevelopment or reuse of which may be complicated by the presence or potential of hazardous substance pollutants or contaminants. It's not necessarily, it doesn't have to be the big gray smoke stacks that you think of when you think of Brownfields. It can be underutilized sites. It could go back to uses from, you know, 50 years ago. And again, as I said, it could just be the suspicion that contamination exists. So there's two buckets of, of Brownfields. Petroleum, you know, gas stations, old rail yards, and then other hazardous substances, industrial sites, underutilized warehouses, commercial buildings, dry cleaners, landfills, buildings with asbestos or lead-based paint, mine scarred lands. And actually, the property that kind of brought us to today is the old Verso paper site. And that's still privately held, so we can't go into the cleanup program. But the assessment program that we're pursuing, it can be privately held. We of course need the cooperation of the property owner, but we can assess private and public lands and buildings. So we are proposing a community-wide assessment, so county-wide for Benton County. The maximum grant amount is $600,000. However, we are hearing from some of the EPA reps that that could go up to $700,000 for the assessment this year. It's a three-year grant term, so from the time that you sign the contract with the EPA, we have three years to complete the assessment. It's 100% grant-funded. There is no match required. And you don't increase your score by, by matching, so it's just purely 100% grant-funded, which is unusual. What we've seen work really well and what we have room to do, there's page limits with these grants, is to highlight three to four areas within the county that can make us the most competitive. If you are awarded, you aren't struck or stuck with just using those three or four. You can use it anywhere in the county, but we want to have three or four that really tell the story for Benton County. And the goal is to, again, identify, prioritize, and complete environmental assessments, and then the remedial actions that might be required by some of those properties, and assist in positioning those sites for the redevelopment. So some of the outputs that would come from a result of this grant is, again, the environmental site assessments. Typically, with the $600,000 maximum, we can do about 16 to 20 of those Phase One environmental assessments. Asbestos, lead-based paint, and hazardous building materials survey, usually we see between six to 10 of those. Cleanup plans, again, six to 10, depending upon the complexity. And it also allows you to do planning, so area-wide reuse plans for Brownfield-impacted areas or neighborhoods. We can use it for public outreach, the meetings and materials education, and then the inventory of the Brownfield sites throughout the county. So there's different levels. Phase One, so that's really a desktop, web-based research, identifying the history of the site and if there's, based on the past use of the site, if there's any indication that contamination would still exist. If nothing, if no cleanup activity has ever happened, then you would go into a Phase Two where you sample and test. And then potentially would go into a remedial action plan. And with the buildings, we can, as I mentioned, do hazardous building material survey. Again, asbestos, lead-based paint, any contaminants that might be present that would hinder the demolition or that we need to be cautious of when demolishing buildings, if that's what it comes to. A little bit more on the planning and the reuse planning activities that we can do. So existing conditions assessment, and this goes beyond just the building, the built environment, but also looking at the infrastructure, the utilities and roads. Market analysis for that potential reuse, identifying the opportunities and constraints with that area, visioning, redevelopment planning, and an implementation strategy. Community outreach. Again, we've been using in the past very traditional modes of outreach. And as you can imagine, in the last year and a half, we've gotten very innovative with ways that we can still receive input and educate the public on what's going on. So a number of virtual type meetings, Zoom, you know, like we're doing here this morning. Or we even have this 3D software that allows the person who's watching to really feel like they're part of the area that we're meeting in. And it provides the opportunity for the residents to provide input on potential sites that might be contaminated, and especially those residents that are living in or near the neighborhoods where there is substantial hazardous subsidence, substances. So the Brownfield inventory, again, two types of Brownfields, petroleum and hazardous substances. We used to have to break out how much money we were spending on each of those buckets. Now we can just blend them together, which is nice, because when you're going into it, you're not entirely sure how much would be petroleum-based versus the other hazardous substances. So we would create a comprehensive list of both types of Brownfield sites. And then through the Brownfields Advisory Committee, which I'll talk a little bit more in a bit, establish prioritizing criteria, because even if it goes up to $700,000, chances are you're going to have more Brownfield sites than what you have money to handle with. So we need to set up some sort of prioritization criteria with you. And we can help, again, as little or as much as needed. And then you would rank those sites and then nominate sites for ultimate grant funding. So this would all happen post, hopefully, grant award. Now diving into the proposal itself, I believe you all have a copy in your packets. I'll just review the answers to the five questions that were posed before us. Community involvement, and I think I kind of covered that already, but we know what the US EPA's priorities are for community involvement. They really want to see entities involve environmental groups as well as grassroots organizations in addition to your typical kind of redevelopment, real estate community, the neighborhood, community residential, local governments, of course, they'll be at the table. But we also want to make sure that we reach out to the environmental groups and grassroots organizations. And also, we, the notice of funding opportunity isn't out yet, but we anticipate that they will have a heavier priority on what we're seeing from the Biden administration coming out with their priorities, and it's environmental justice and climate change and racial equity and addressing barriers to opportunity. That's what we anticipate. So I just wanted to throw that out there. But this Brownfields program with EPA, they've been doing environmental justice forever. And that's their history, that's their legacy, is cleaning up contaminated lands. And typically, it's disadvantaged populations, the very young, the very old, that are impacted by the contamination. The second question was about leveraging other grant opportunities. And the US EPA, as well as other federal agencies, like the US Economic Development Agency, potentially Department of Transportation, depending upon what redevelopment opportunities come out. We are very well-versed in the agencies at the federal level and the different programs that they have, and how we can leverage, you know, once we do this assessment, how we can leverage and stack other funding to help in the redevelopment and moving forward of these sites. Also, the state of Minnesota, Department of Employment and Economic Development, they have a number of, of grant programs for contamination investigation and cleanup, MPCA, and many others. The third question was about GIS and web-based information. And with the Brownfields inventory, it is a spatially data-based inventory. So we would work with the county's existing GIS platform. We took a look and, just a very cursory review, and it looks like it will work out well for the Brownfields inventory. The fourth question was conflict of interest, and we have none. Stantec does not work for, like, the city of Sock Rapids, or Foley, or Rice, or Sartell that could potentially pose a conflict of interest. So then the last question was about the schedule, and I don't know how well that appears on your screen or if not, certainly in your packet. We anticipate that the US EPA will release their notice of funding opportunity the end of this month. Once that happens, the deadline is anywhere from 60 to 80 days from that date to get that in. So we would, and even before they release the notice, I was talking with Amanda, if you decide to move forward with Stantec, that we would want to get kickoff meeting held right away. There are a number of things we can do in advance of the funding opportunity being released. Also, we've seen that the guidelines from year to year don't necessarily change that much. There might be, again, a little different in their reprioritizing, or maybe buzzwords and phrases that we want to make sure that we put in there. But essentially, we've been doing this for dozens of years, so we know what the guidelines are. We can at least get kicked off prior to that notice of funding, because once that is released, the clock is ticking. So the first, you know, most of this schedule is once the grant is awarded. Between now and the deadline, again, we'll be working with BAP and the county and the local governments in identifying those three to four sites that really tell the story of Benton County and why Benton County should receive this program, and then we wait. It's usually four to six months from the time of the deadline until they announce. And then, once they do announce the awards, hopefully, we'll be in that list. And then the county, BAP, will need to enter into a contract with the US EPA. That can take a couple of months, and then we can, you know, convene the local governments, work on the, who's on the Brownfields Advisory Committee, how do you set up your prioritization? How do people nominate sites? All of that can happen post-award. We do want to think a little bit about it now, though, because we'll talk about that in the application. So roles. Benton County and BAP, you know, assist with the data collection and outreach to cities, manage and oversee the consultant team, which would be Stantec, hopefully, responsible for the administration of the grant and the reporting, coordinate the meetings of the Brownfields Advisory Committee, register with grants.gov if you're not already, ensure the SAM's registration is current. And then for the cities, again, assisting with data collection, nomination. You guys know where the suspicion and known contamination is. Participate in the BAC and assist with the local outreach effort. The consultant T will be the application lead, completing the assessments, remedial, and reuse planning activities, lead role in completing the inventory outreach tasks, assist with reporting, and serve as a technical resource. So the Brownfields Advisory Committee, you know, meetings every three to four months, assist, as I mentioned, determining the process to be used for prioritizing sites, coordinate the local outreach efforts, and then eventually nominate the sites and help solicit nominations for review and assessment. This is just a laundry list of getting started. RFQ for the consultant, which, we can check that box. You're doing that right now. Then we develop the proposal. Again, what is your story? Identify the needs of the communities, what the impact of Brownfield sites has been having on the community and, you know, stifling or preventing the county realizing its full economic development potential. We'll describe the project, the focus, engage the community and establish partners with those organizations I mentioned earlier, identify the project benefits, and demonstrate the county and BAP's capacity for receiving either federal funds or at a minimum, state and regional funding, and being good stewards of, of the public funding that's been received. So this was just, I picked out on US, the census, this identified the opportunity zone in St. Cloud, so certainly the east side, being in Benton County. Again, with the priorities, at the federal level, we want to show, the worse the story is, the better your chances are, if that makes any sense. The poor, the, again, very young, very old, minority population. And then having that overlay with potential or known contaminated sites tells the best story. This is just MPCAs, what's in my neighborhood. These are tools that we use to kind of help get it started in addition to the communities and what they know about. So this is MPCAs, what's in my neighborhood is very helpful. And I was just showing, you know, so here's Sartell, here's Foley. And that's it. I guess I don't have a question slide, but I threw a lot of information out at you. One thing I did want to mention that's in the proposal, we were asked to present two different ways for the cost for this. You're probably wondering what's the cost. The second approach is our most favored approach, and that's where Stantec does the grant application and writing for free. But if you agree to duly procure us to do the assessment at the backside, if the grant is awarded. So we come in, do the application for free if you agree to use us, if we get you the money. So we get you the money, you use us, all of that grant writing was for free. If you're not sure that you would, you want Stantec to do the grant application, but you're not sure you want us to do the backside of it, we propose we would do the grant application for $20,000. And then you would just, if awarded, you would need to procure that environmental consultant if awarded. So we found it, and we've done it both ways, but again, it works really well. And it, it's nice for communities who have not been through the US EPA process before that you're not out any money, because it is a very competitive program. We've had great success with this, but there's no guarantee. It's just ultra-competitive. So it's nice to be able to do it at no cost to the community. If you get the money, that's great, and then you work with us in implementing the project. And resumes of all of our environmental consultants are included in the proposal, so you can see the depth and breadth of their experience with Brownfields. With that, I can answer any questions you might have.
What are the restrictions?
Restrictions? Well, you have, there's a number of restrictions. One is that you need to competitively procure the consultant you're working with, which is what you're doing right now. You have three years' time to use the funds. It can be used on any private or publicly-held property, but as outlined in the proposal, there are certain uses of the funds. So like I went over, we can do it for planning and community outreach. We can do Phase One, Phase Two, we can do the remedial action plan, but we can't actually clean up any sites with this funding. We can assess and do the remedial action planning. It's everything up until that cleanup piece of it. So for those sites that do need the cleanup, that's where we would envision doing an EPA cleanup grant and/or the state deeds cleanup program.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. So let's just say we were lucky enough to, to get the $600,000, and we went with approach number two. Out of that $600,000, I know you, you're proposing rates, billable time-material rates. How much of that $600,000 would be used for your fees, and how much of it would be approximately directed right towards projects?
Great question. Let me, I, I did bring a sample budget. So this is based on a similar county, the size of Benton. So it was $40,000 for the Brownfields inventory and site prioritization, over $100,000 for Phase One, $400,000 for Phase Two. Let me just... I'm sorry, I should have done the math beforehand.
And these are only assessments?
Yeah, I think, I think there's more.
Pardon me?
And these are only assessments? There's no action done?
Right.
Phase One is done, about 17 Phase Ones are done. Phase Two, which is the testing and sampling, the remedial and reuse action plan, the hazardous substance surveys, and the community outreach. So about, I, I'm not reading this budget correctly, and I apologize. So the Phase One and Phase Two and all of those building surveys are tasks that Stantec would undertake. So it's a little misleading when I say... So, it's a little misleading when I say, you know, about 560,000 would go to STANTEC, but that's to do the Phase One, the Phase Two, to do all of the building on the site assessments. Um, and additionally, the county, and this would be negotiated, um, can use funding for, you know, Amanda's work or any other county officials. Um, so about 50 to 60,000 is kept by the client to pay for their costs for involvement in the Brownfields Advisory Committee, the community outreach, um, and all of that.
Anything else? Any other questions? I guess um, as as we look at moving forward with this or not, um, you mentioned that you need a an assessment advisory committee?
Brownfields Advisory Committee, yes.
So, you need one appointed with county people?
It would be great if we had one or two county people on that Brownfields Advisory Committee. It would be good if we had a representative from each of the cities.
Right.
So, Foley, Rice, Sartell, East St. Cloud.
Okay.
And then some other non-governmental organizations.
All right. How many people do you normally have on that committee?
Typically, 10 to 12 works well.
Okay.
Again, you don't want it too small, you don't want it too big.
Correct.
Um, and we'd work with Amanda and you in helping to determine who should sit on that.
Right. That was my understanding. I wasn't for sure on that.
Another question?
Sure.
At what point does the community needs assessment fit in the process?
That's right away at the beginning.
So, that would be involvement from your cities, right?
Right.
Correct, yeah.
As well as the residential. You know, we want to have tools to put out on websites to um work with meetings that are already being held, to be present and to educate and solicit information um from different groups beyond the government as well.
And and these sites would only be sites that are, I think Amanda's explained that, that would be available for development, correct?
We would like to have those sites that have the greatest potential for redevelopment.
I mean, not just any site that any, you know, somebody says, oh, I need this site. That's not the way this is going to work.
Right. We're looking at that future economic development that assessing and cleaning up these sites would bring, exactly.
I mean, that's the that's the object of BEP getting involved with it.
Yep, absolutely. To take away that um, or to build confidence is maybe a a better way to say it. Build confidence in these sites that they can be, you know, that that purchaser or whoever is redeveloping it isn't going to be strapped with huge environmental costs.
Okay. Anything else?
With the restrictions, I want to know more about what it's restricted to if we, for these land developments.
I'm not sure I'm understanding your your question, like what kind of restrictions are you worried about?
Um, you talked about was it housing developments or what kind of developments you want to do?
Um, so you're, for the future development of those sites, um, there is no constraint by this program that would prevent or preclude a site from being developed commercially, um, or residentially or otherwise.
So, it would go according to what our community needs were?
Right. And the zone, you know, there are things in place at the local governmental level, like your zoning uh plans that would dictate how properties are developed. Right?
Right. You know, counties have, counties and cities both have, where we can have residential, where we can have industrial, where we can have...
You have your zoning plans, you have future land use plans. That would all abide by...
That part's all taken care of already.
Follows the process.
Right. Okay. So, Amanda, did we, this was just for review, or do you want?
Um, so, to to just kind of recap everything, um, so the the environmental grant that Heidi is, um, at STANTEC is proposing to write would really complete the Phase Ones, Phase Twos, and any wraps that are needed, right?
Hmm.
Um, and that's throughout the county, and we would identify some of those sites um kind of right away in the application process. We can use that money, um, if we were to secure the grant to, on any site that is needed in the county, okay? So, I just wanted to kind of give you a quick um synopsis of that. And then, as far as the administration costs, um, I think Heidi calculated roughly about 10% of that, those grant proceeds would go to administrative and cost, pay the consultant, um, pay BEP for any work that we're doing, um, stuff like that. So, then we have roughly, um, you know, if we secure the $600,000 grant, um, $560,000 of that would go to all those assessments. I just wanted to kind of um put that out on the table. That's kind of what Heidi was um recapping. As far as uh action for this particular item, uh, we are looking um at the county to approve by motion, um, directing the staff to enter in an agreement with the selected consultant. If the county board feels comfortable with uh moving forward with the cost approach number two, um, as written in the proposal with STANTEC, we would like to move forward with that um at the county's direction. So, approving by motion for us to enter into agreement with the selected consultant. That final agreement would be negotiated by BP. We would negotiate that on on the county's behalf. Um, we would review it with the county administrator and the county attorney before bringing it back to the county board for final approval. So, um, really, this morning, your action is to direct staff, one way or another, um, whether or not to move forward with um a an agreement with a a selected consultant.
Okay. Commissioner Heinon?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thanks. Uh, Amanda, so I know we've talked about some selected sites. How soon do we have to have more sites available for you to downsize or prioritize before this grant process?
Three to four, if I can.
Yeah.
Three to four is what we need for the application.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, but then, and then, once you're awarded, then you start in collecting all as many nominations as possible. We work with you in setting up the criteria and prioritization of those sites and the outreach to solicit folks to nominate also. Um, so you have up to three years, but you really want to get the bulk of that, the site assessment done in the first six to nine months.
Right, mm-hmm. And I understand, Amanda, you have, you presented some of the sites either at BEP or at this board.
We did, mm-hmm.
Ready that you had in mind.
Yep. And one of those sites is the Verso site, as we talked about earlier, Heidi talked about.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Amanda, just to clarify, when you're talking about option two, so option one, they would do the application for free, and then you, they'd be awarded the grant?
Option one, they, we would, um, it was a $20,000 fee, right?
That's option one?
Write the grant. That's option one. Option two is where um STANTEC would provide the uh uh application assistance and coalition forming at no cost.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, should they receive, or should we receive an award?
Okay.
Um, then, you know, the the environmental and inventory enhancements, community involvement, grant implementation would be provided on time and material basis. And then that that is kind of laid out on page 18 of the proposal, so...
I just think I had my options.
Yep, you had your options.
Just wanted to verify.
Fixed up, yep.
Okay.
So, um, and if the other part, I don't know if Heidi mentioned, but if it is unsuccessful, um, they would revise and resubmit that um grant application in 2023, so...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we wouldn't have to come back to the county board.
Thanks for that. That was, that helps.
Yep.
Yep, that helps, too.
All right.
So, do we have, like, they talked about the option of doing this process with STANTEC and then the STANTEC after? Can we decide to, with the STANTEC after, after we get done with the first session?
If if we move forward with that approach, um, you would be looking at approach number one, paying the consultant the $20,000, write the grant, and then going through a whole nother process to select the environmental consultant. So, approach number two um would eliminate that second step, and we would hire STANTEC not only to write the grant, but also to facilitate the um assessments for and the coalition forming for the Brownfields Assessment Program.
And we decide on step two after step one is done?
I would say not.
You, you, yeah, you...
I guess I'm comfortable with going ahead with step one, but I'm want to find out what step one does before we decide about step...
So, step one is just writing the grant application and paying the consultant the $20,000 to write the grant application. Step two, you, there's no cost to write the grant application and um procure the consultant to do all the assessments.
And if there's no, if we're not successful, they do it in '23 again?
Exactly.
Right.
At no cost.
At no cost.
At no cost.
I'll make a motion to uh direct staff to enter into an agreement with the selected consultant.
On which proposal?
On uh option two.
On option two.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded that we enter into a consultant agreement with uh STANTEC on on option two. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Always I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
It passes on a four to one vote.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
You bet. Thanks, Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda.
You always bring good stuff before us. Roxanne from Department of Development on rezoning 2.7 acres from R1, single-family residence to an agricultural district.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Pull this up here. Okay, let's... Okay, so the request before you this morning is to rezone a parcel of property that's 2.78 acres in Watab Township. Uh, this particular property is along River Road. And as you can see from the land use plan, um, this area is outlined in, with a pink red circle, just to give you an idea of where it stands within the county. Um, it's south of Rice and then uh west of Highway 10. Um, it's in an area that's designated as either medium-quality soils or an overlay of rural residential overlay. The property here is outlined with an aqua color. Again, I have this uh zoomed out pretty far so that you can get an idea of the surrounding uses. Primarily, the area is zoned for agricultural uses. Um, we've got some residential along the river, um, and then south, uh, very far to the south. Um, the particular property that we're looking at is actually zoned R1, um, and it's in a small uh strip of residential homes along River Road. This is another visual of that. To give you an idea, I've outlined each of uh the zoning districts. Uh, this particular property is on the north side of an area zoned for R1 residential uses. And you can see that there are a number of single-family homes along this area. Uh, back in 1999, the property owners that own the property to the east of this development um had decided to move forward with rezoning and subdividing the four lots that you see shown uh because it was not um conducive to agricultural uses at that time. Um, you can see that there is, uh, it's quite odd how the zoning layer ends up on these properties. Um, when they rezoned this property, they had one description and then subdivided it at a later date with a different description for each of the lots. And so, if this does move forward today, I I plan to discuss with the neighbors um extending the residential zoning so that it does um go to the edge of each of those properties, so it's a cleaner and clearer description. Um, but the the property to the north here is what is being requested to be rezoned to agricultural uses. And the reason for that is the property owners, the Durkesses, own the parcel just to the south. They have uh their residential home on that property and are proposing to construct a concrete contractor shop on the parcel just to the north of them. Um, contractor shops are not permitted in residential districts. They're permitted in our agricultural zones. Um, we felt that this was fitting to uh present a rezoning request to the Planning Commission and to the county board due to the property being directly abutting um other agricultural land. Just to zoom in a little bit closer, here is a proposed area of the contractor shop. As you can see, to the north and to the west, the property is significantly screened by um vegetation and heavy trees. The Durkesses do own the property that is to the east of this. They own all of that agricultural land, um, and then the residential home. So, in this area, there are actually just two other homes um along the east side of River Road. Uh, with that, uh, I have not seen any, uh, or I have not received any phone calls for information on this, and Watab Township did review this and had no concerns with the rezoning request.
Okay. So, we're having a public hearing. Um, the public hearing is to consider ordinance 482 to rezone 2.78 acres from an R1 to, single-family resident to an A agricultural district. Um, I think we heard the staff report already, so we don't need to go through that again as we... If the applicant is present or a representative is here, please come to the podium and give your name and address.
Good morning, Commissioners.
I'm Chris Durkis, and we live at 995, 9950 Northeast River Road, Rice.
Okay. We'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the county board on this agenda item? If so, please come to the podium and give your name and address. Anybody in the audience? Nobody's in the audience. Final call for anyone wishing to address the county board. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any emails or other communications to be read into the record?
No, there's not.
Okay. Has the department received any comments, concerns from agencies, cities, or townships on this agenda?
Watab Township did discuss this at their uh previous board meeting, and they had no concerns.
Okay. If if any official action was required by the affected township, was the action taken?
There was no official action necessary, but they did let me know that, uh, Watab Township did let me know that they were supportive of the request.
Okay. The county board will now have time for questions of staff and discussion. As a reminder to the audience, the public hearing portion is now closed. Are there any other questions or comments from board members before we take action on this?
Mr. Chair, I just commented that the Planning Commission did give unanimous uh approval to move this onto the county board for approval.
All right, thank you.
And and also with that, you know, one thing that we did discuss with the Planning Commission is we felt strongly that this was not spot zoning at all because of its location to other ag property.
Correct. It kind of ties right in.
Ties right in, yeah. That's what I seen on the map.
Anything else from the county board on discussion?
Was that one of the things we passed in the consent agenda?
No, no.
Totally different.
This is a public hearing. Public hearings, we only pass the item before us on that, on a public hearing. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve ordinance 42 to rezone 2.78 acres from the R1 single-family residential district to the agricultural district as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve um item, what was it, 482 for 2.78 acres to, from R1 to agricultural district. Any other discussion? Always I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you, and thank you for keeping your business in Benton County, too.
Thank you.
Um, if you don't mind, very briefly, um, Commissioner Johnson had asked that I briefly speak on uh one of our other items at the Planning Commission, and this was a density transfer request that we reviewed, and the Planning Commission did approve at last Thursday's meeting. Um, a density transfer, it doesn't happen very often, but what what that process is is um an approval of a conditional use permit to transfer density from one quarter-quarter section to another quarter-quarter section. This particular property is in Glendarado Township. Um, as you can see, in this quarter-quarter section, I have four houses in this area. So, we've maxed out the density of four per forty. Uh, the property owner did own, does own for, uh, 56 acres south of Glendarado Road. And so, because they have an additional quarter-quarter section without any dwellings on it, they're able to transfer a development right from that south quarter-quarter to the area closer to the road. Um, and this area is uh... And this area is, has quite a bit of wetlands on it. And the process is to prove that there's a buildable site within this quarter-quarter section to be moved into another quarter-quarter section. And then we restrict density and limit it by reducing it by one in that southern quarter-quarter section. So it was a pretty straightforward process, no objections from the public on that one. And the Planning Commission did approve it.
Mr. Chair, thank you, Roxanne. I just asked her to bring this, this is something we don't generally see very much of. And so it's just kind of a nice refresher on how this stuff works, so, thank you.
You're very welcome.
All right.
Thanks, Roxanne.
Thanks, Roxanne.
Thank you.
Monty, we have the Humane Society.
Good morning.
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 Thank you for having me. I also would like to say thank you for accommodating us today versus last week. I was on my honeymoon, so I do.
Congratulations. Congratulations, that's probably pretty important, yeah.
It was very exciting. So yes, my name is now Crystal Corey. And I'm with the Tri-County Humane Society in St. Cloud. And we have been there since 1974, we have been in operation. And it's really easy for people to look at the Humane Society as, oh, just a place to go adopt an animal or to get a new family member, a new cat or a new dog. But the reality is, is that there's a lot more going on behind the scenes. We are in the business of saving lives. And every day, we see stray animals of all conditions, ages, and availabilities, in a sense, coming to our building that require all sorts of care. So the reason we're here today to present is we would like to be considered in your budget for 2022. We are solely funded off of our constituent donations. So even though we have a big, beautiful new building, which we can house a lot more animals, it does require a lot more on the funding side of it. We have a lot more lights to run, we have a lot more area for our AC to keep our animals comfortable. We also are seeing an increase in animals coming in the building. So with every animal that comes in to Tri-County, they're vaccinated. If they are not spayed or neutered, they will be before they leave. And all of that is in an effort to create a better outcome for all of these animals. So having stray animals in the area, creating babies all the time, it really becomes a nuisance, especially the cat population. It does tend to affect things like the birds and the other local wildlife. So by spaying and neutering these animals and maintaining that low population of unwanted litters, we're able to drastically see the opposite side of that where it's a, it's a lot better scenario for all animals. We also vaccinate all of our animals that come in our door. So it gets a little costly. A spay for a female cat or a dog is twice as much as it is for neutering males. And I know obviously that doesn't always sound exciting, but it's actually for their benefit. There's a lot of conditions and things that can develop in animals that haven't been spayed or neutered. So by doing that, we're increasing their longevity of life as well. So just a couple statistics that I brought with me. So in 2020, while the world was shut down, we were in essential service. And one of the things that we heard a lot of for essential services was obviously our healthcare, our financial, our, our emergency services and things like that. But in some aspects, the shelter life got a little overlooked. We were open every single day, seven days a week. We didn't close one day. We didn't even really adjust our hours. And that's because the need remains. There's always a, a need in the community for animal services. And it's, again, not just the fluffy part of adoption. It's saving lives, it's rescuing neonatal kittens that are only two days old. It's pulling parasites and treating all kinds of different infections and conditions that can occur when an animal is just living wildly, even though they're domesticated. So in 2020, when everything was going on, we still placed 3,700 animals. So now that's just placement, that's just strictly adoption. It doesn't even include all of the stray animals and re-meetings with the owners that we've had. So, and all of those animals still receive those vaccinations. So it can get really, really costly. One of the main things that came about in our new building was having an onsite surgery suite. So we did over 2,000 surgeries last year, which is a lot. That can include our spays and neuters, but it also can include things like tail amputation or, you know, even spaying our rabbits and removal of eyes if there's infection and things like that. So there's always a need for us and we don't ever see that go away. We're busy every single day. In 2020, we solicited or we received over 40,000 phone calls. And we have people reach out on social media all the time. So it's really important to us that we continue what we're doing every year going forward. And of course, with that comes funding. So we do have a pretty small staff. We have less than 20 paid staff members and over 400 volunteers. So we really do operate solely on volunteers as well as, like I said, our constituents' donations and things like that. So basically, that's my spiel. I have, I'm new with Tri-County, but I've been there. I worked there back in animal care in 2015 and it's really a rewarding place. We are very proud of our new building and we're very proud of the progress that we're making. And it's easy to see with this year as well, we're actually seeing an increase in the animals that are coming in and an increase in the animals that are going out. So it's just a revolving door with needs always needing to be met. So, thank you.
Questions? Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Are you guys operating as a nonprofit or?
We are, yes, correct. Yep, 501(c)(3).
Okay, and then I got one more. I know last year, Sock Rapids got rid of their animal control. And I was wondering, what do you, how do you work the after-hours side of things? He happened to be a good friend of mine and finding somebody to take that position is very challenging.
Yeah.
So, I mean, does Benton County in general have animal control or do cities take care of that? And how do they get them to your facility?
Well, occasionally, we will have to make those phone calls out. I do know that the majority of the strays that come in through our building for Benton County are brought in by just the public. And unfortunately, when you find an animal and you bring that animal in, we still have to ask for a donation or some sort of fee. So if you think about it, you rescued this animal, you're trying to do the best thing and it's going to cost you. And that doesn't always feel right. But unfortunately, it's what we're kind of up against. I know currently, we do work with St. Cloud City Animal Control. And we actually, with our new building, have been able to create a really seamless transfer option for them. So they have access to our garage on the overnight. And again, if something were to happen in the middle of the night, they're able to come, let themselves in, get that animal set up in a cage with water and food. And then as soon as we get there in the morning, we essentially process that intake and get them into the general population following vaccinations. So, yeah.
Mr. Chair, Crystal, congratulations again on your wedding.
Thanks.
Just a quick question, is, so Tri-County, is that in name only or is there actual support from two other counties?
Yeah, so we do work with Sherburne and Stearns, but we don't receive any major contracts. The only city that we contract with is St. Cloud right now, and that's it. So we're essentially not funded governmentally in any direct continuous basis. It's just basically on a request.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, Stearns and Sherburne do not support Tri-County in their budgets?
Not, we do our requests, so occasionally, we will get approved for funding in that similar aspect. But not under a contractual basis.
Sure, okay, thank you.
So how, how long do you keep the animals after they come in?
So they have no time limits with us. They can stay as long as they need to. Obviously, we prefer less because any animal in a shelter environment is going to be stressed. They want to be free, they want to roam the area, they want to sleep on a bed. And while we do have beds, it is a pretty constrained area. So our animals can stay as long as they need to. The average, I would say, for a cat is anywhere between two weeks to two months. And sometimes with the dogs, it can really vary. Sometimes, you know, there may be behavioral issues, there may be medical issues in which case we work with our foster cares to kind of house that animal, treat that animal until they're ready to come back to Tri-County for their adoption process. So no time limits, they can stay as long as they need to.
So mostly, every, all of them are adopted then?
Yes, yep, in most cases, yes. I would say, so we do have a 94% placement rate. So of the animals that are coming through our door, 94% are being placed for adoption.
Okay.
And the rest, some are taken, followed by their owners?
Well, that's, that's more, so the stray reclaim, those statistics aren't quite in our 94% placement because that animal already has an owner. The difference that we're, the 6% that we're seeing usually comes from humane euthanasia. In some cases, we'll have an animal come to us who is very ill, deathly ill, to the point where their quality of life is, you know, not going to be great. And so as a Humane Society, it is in our best interest and in their best interest to humanely euthanize. But of course, that goes through a very strict process with the appropriate people approving things like that, so.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good day.
Mike Harvey. Land Services to prevent, present.
Morning, Mike.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for rescheduling me from last week to this week. I appreciate that, I had a pre-scheduled family vacation, I was not getting married.
In the, in the packet is essentially what you submitted, your, your two policy issues come first and then the detailed line item is in the board packet. So first one is the staff appraiser and the second one is the technical analyst position, so.
Do you guys mind if I do that in reverse order? Just go over the budget real quick and then talk about a few trends and then we'll do the policy issue request, if that's okay with you?
Yep, that'll work.
So we're a smaller department in the county. We have nine full-time employees and then we share a part-timer with the Corrections Department as well that was just starting this year. So the majority of our, our big expenditures are, are going to be salaries, wages, and benefits. That's the big line item for our department. If you, if you look down on, let's see, that would be, on the first page, account 6262, you'll see 65,500, that's paid to subcontractors who do work for the county. So that's, we receive a fee, whatever that is per parcel. And then we usually retain about 20% of that for administration and then we will pay the rest of that out to the subcontractor. That, that would be our biggest line item budget expense, so I thought that was important to point that out. We also have revenue that offsets that. So then, as we contract out that service, we receive a fee in revenue that exceeds what we're paying out for contracting that service. And that would show up online, on page one, let's see. Oh, here we go. Actually, it's on, where is it now?
It's 011150476262 on your board packet. It's, it's shown as handwritten page number 46, Assessment Services. That's your contracted payments to.
Right.
Your locals.
Right, I just wanted to point out the revenue that we have coming in on the other side of that.
And that's at the top of that same page.
Right, that's the transfers to other funds.
Okay.
So I'll keep, I'll keep moving along here. Oh, I'm sorry, revenue right there, 101,000. So those are the contract fees that are coming in and then you can see the 65,500 that are paid to subcontractors. So I apologize, I just wanted you to see that there was revenue offsetting that big line item there. You know, then the rest of the recorder revenue that we have coming in, the majority of that is just from your standard. When a document's recorded, the county collects $14.50 for each document that's recorded. That's the majority of the, of the fees that we collect. And then we also, this is the time of the year that I do this, so we were in compliance all of last year with how fast we recorded our documents, which is 10 days for paper documents and five days for electronic documents. So then the county is allowed to use that money to, to fund any projects that they would like. And currently, that money, it says recorder fees compliance fund under 5551 on the first page, is used to fund the GIS position in the Department of Development. So that, that number is, has been steadily increasing as our document volume has gone up. So you, you can see that both our revenue for 2020 actuals and our recorders fee compliance fund went up and we're projecting that to be even higher this year. So that's, that's just a real basic overview. We don't, we don't have a lot of other big line item expenses or revenue sources coming in. I just thought I'd talk a little, can you hear me, is this?
Yep, we're good.
It's my nasally voice, it's bothering me. So some, some trends that we're seeing on the e-recording side, we, for July, we e-recorded 65% of the documents that came through the county, so two out of every three that came through were electronic. And then we've seen, and I, I kind of brought this up before, a couple months ago, we saw an increase of 18% recording volume from 2019 to 2020. And so far this year, we're on track for a 17% increase in recording volume from last year. Some other trends that are, that are going on in the recording side would be refinance activity with the low interest rates. You're going to see, we're continuing to see more refinance activity and splitting and plating of property. I'm sure the Department of Development can attest to that as well. On the assessment side, some major trends that are affecting our department are low entrance into the assessment field, so we're not seeing a lot of new people that are coming into the assessment industry or the appraisal industry. I think one of the, the reasons for that is the higher education standards that have been placed on assessors over the last few years. The State Board of Assessors, along with the Department of Revenue, moved to have greater education standards placed on assessors throughout the state, which on the plus side means you have better personnel out there doing the work. On the negative side, you have a lower qualified pool of people to pick from. And then another thing affecting real estate in general is the continual demand for real estate. So we're seeing, obviously, people, there's not enough housing. Housing is a serious issue across the nation. And then you're seeing the increase in commodity prices affect the demand for farm properties as well. So I, I just thought I'd give you guys kind of those major trends that are going on in, in real estate and then with our e-recording. Any questions related to that?
Any questions? Nope.
So I have two policy issue requests and I'd rather not read through the whole thing on, just because it's kind of lengthy. We discussed this a little bit earlier in the year when I came to the board and talked a little bit about kind of our assessment situation here in Benton County. So just to recap of that, right now, the local assessor group of assessors in the county assesses 85% of properties in Benton County. 63% of the county is assessed through a contract with the county. So they work under a contract that Benton County has and then 37% would be working on a contract that they hold individually. So sorry, 63% is either us fulfilling the contract with a person in our office or with a, a local assessor. We'll subcontract that out. So moving forward, we have a lot of our contracts, some, a couple of them actually expired in 2021 and some of them are expiring, the majority of them actually are expiring in 2022. And so this was an important time to, to, to look at this situation. So we have contracts with Sock Rapids, Foley, Watab, Glendorado, Graham, Maywood, St. George, Sock Rapids Township, Gilman, and Royalton. And we subcontract most of those out to local assessors. Currently, we do. Currently, we do Watab in-house, and we are doing Graham, and we do Royalton, and sorry, the City of Gilman as well. And we have income coming in from these contracts, which I kind of showed you on the budget there, of $65,500. And then we also retained Watab Township, Graham, and Gilman, which added an additional $18,400 over the last few years in revenue that we haven't had to pay out. So you can see I did it there. It was $22,321 minus about $3,900 that we kept for administration. So the total expenditures to add a new staff appraiser in order to fulfill these contracts in-house would be $94,486, $94,500. Total revenue that we would be able to reallocate to pay for this position would be $65,574. And then I just wanted to make mention of that $18,400 that we had kind of, the county didn't have to pay it out over the last few years because we kept that work in-house already. So alternative solutions is that we can keep trying to hire local or subcontractors to do this work for the county, if they are available. We don't know if this is going to be possible in the future. You have increasing rates on assessment contracts, and then you have the low availability of qualified assessors to complete this work. Again, I stated the high education standards. So we've had a reduced entrance of both local and county assessors in the state of Minnesota, which has caused some problems. I just, and as an update, I think Monty sent this out, but the assessor who does Minden, Langola, and Rice, those are all local assessor contracts. They sent a letter that they'll be retiring after this assessment year as well. So that's three more jurisdictions that are going to be looking for an assessor. And I just wanted to let you guys know, and I don't know if Monty sent this out, but I did send a letter to them, letting them know that we would be available to help them try and find a qualified assessor for their jurisdiction.
I did.
Thank you, Monty. Any questions on the policy issue request related to the hiring a new full-time employee to fulfill the contracts that we already have?
So who's doing the contracts now?
Local assessors. We have local assessors that are subcontract to fulfill that work.
Of them, townships and cities mentioned above?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. Three of them, Watab, Graham, and City of Gilman are performed by our office. So Maria in our office handles that. And the other ones, we have another local assessor. So then we have one contract where, that gives us the ability to administer the contract, and then we have a subcontract for the person who's actually fulfilling the work. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Any other questions?
So how are you planning on doing the Minden Township and the ones where they're retiring?
Well, that's really up to those local jurisdictions. They would have to make a decision to either contract with us or contract with another local assessor in order to make sure that their statutory obligations are met to have an assessor out there who's qualified doing this work every, so every parcel has to be reviewed at once every five years.
And we have qualified assessors here also.
You mean working at the county, or?
Could work with that.
We would have to identify exactly how we would help them fulfill this obligation. If they wanted to contract with the county, we would need additional staff. If they wanted to contract with another local assessor, and they wanted our assistance, then I would reach out to ones that I thought were more qualified. That has been an issue, though. You know, Minden reached out to me this year and was asking if we had any qualified pool of assessors, and we didn't have anybody that was interested at the time. So that has been a problem, finding local assessors that want to do this work.
Any other questions? Any other comments? Is that, you have one more, Mike?
I do, yes. And there's a little more information under the vision, mission, and priorities. I thought I'd save you guys listening to my voice. Also, there's just a little information, comparative data there as well, if you guys have time to review that. I just think overall, you provide a better customer service experience to taxpayers when you have the process completed from start to finish in one office. I think it's better for the tax base to, consistency of work. The second one is a request to hire a part-time technical analyst. This is due to our increase in recording volume and of splitting and plating of properties. This position would be helping with verifying legal descriptions, entering information into our tax system, and any other information that's verified as part of the document transfer process. This is kind of an interesting position. It's one that doesn't get seen. It's, you don't hear about it very often, but if it's not getting done, it slows everything down. They're that important cog in the wheel. So they are, you know, every document that comes through our office, mortgages or deeds, they're verifying that legal description on there, making sure that we have the necessary information put into the tax system so that we're, you know, taxing the right property to the right person. So it's a very important position. And it's important that this position is filled and that we have backup at this position because when documents aren't processed in a timely manner, we run the risk of not having access to that recorder's compliance fund. So if we become out of compliance for a long period of time, or if we don't have 90% of our documents recorded within those timeframes, that's within 10 days on the paper, five days on the electronic, we can lose access to that compliance fund money. One of the bigger reasons, you know, too, here is that we've just had increased volume, and this position is getting burned out. They're just, they, most counties, this job is done between multiple staff in the Auditor Treasurer's Office. You can see under comparative data, I put that, I actually contacted all of our surrounding counties, and almost all of them have multiple trained staff that work with legal descriptions and this particular process in the Auditor Treasurer's Office. Only one of their county does it in their recorder's office, and they also have multiple employees that do this. It's complex and exacting work, so it's not the lot and block ones that are difficult. It's your meets and bounds legal descriptions, your government surveys, legal descriptions that take a long time. And it's important to have somebody knowledgeable that knows how to do that work. So part of my goal is to retain the person who's already doing this work so that they don't get burned out, because I believe it's a very hard position to recruit for.
Mr. Kupinski?
Mr. Chair. Wouldn't this be better suited to cross-train people within your department so that you're, when somebody's getting burnt out, you can shift that to somebody else for a little bit and have the other individual regroup? That way, you got more people that know how to do it and do it correctly?
Yeah, so part of the problem there is this position is paid higher than the other two people who do basic recording of documents, so cross-training there is, I don't think it's feasible. And you also have to have the interest there, and it's not part of their existing job description. So there's a couple different issues with that. The position wasn't originally in our office. It was transferred to our office from the Auditor Treasurer's Office. And it was fulfilled by two employees, one that's moved up in the county, Scottswick, and another who moved on and out of the county. But historically, it was done in the Auditor Treasurer's Office by Heather Bondus and a couple other knowledgeable staff there. So it's exacting work. It's not very easy to train somebody, and they have to be doing it regularly to become proficient at it. Verifying legal descriptions is pretty complex.
So I guess my question has been, has Benton County ever been out of compliance in the past?
Not so far. We have not, nope.
But I mean, even before your time?
I don't have that history. I'm sorry.
Okay. I can't ever remember that we were out of compliance, so, okay. Any other questions? Any other comments? I guess I have one comment, Mike, and that is, a couple of things that have happened. One was that you were unavailable for the June Board of Equalization, and then for the budget here, and them are two pretty important dates in our county. And I would suggest that in the future, you try to make them as the county assessor. I had several complaints, one in particular when you weren't at the Board of Equalization meeting in June.
Okay.
They want to see you, and that's an obligation of your office to be there at that time. So just so you know that the complaints are out there.
Okay. Well, thank you for that feedback.
Mr. Chair? I would echo that. I mean, that is placed months in advance, so. I would echo that from Chair Pop.
Okay, anything else? Thank you.
Yep, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike.
We're in good time. We're right on time, right, Bob?
I'll try to do my best.
Regular county board meeting to conduct the Human Services, and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Heinrich.
We'll call the Human Services Board to order. Is there any changes to the agenda?
I'd like to add one request for a board resolution.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval of the amended agenda.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent item number one and two. Does anybody want consent item number one or two pulled?
Who for approval, Mr. Chair?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bob?
All right. First thing we have is the approval to apply for a public health workforce supplemental funding to support community agencies. So I'm going to ask Jaclyn to come up and discuss that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, thank you for the time on the agenda this morning. So as you know, providing support to our schools over the last 2020 school year was a large part of our COVID-19 response. And throughout this next COVID-19 response school year, we would like to continue to do that. Benton County Public Health would like to apply with your support for an upcoming grant opportunity. The public health workforce supplemental funding is being offered through the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 through the Centers for Disease Control. This is a non-competitive grant with an established funding amount based on our FEP tier. Benton County Public Health may receive up to $160,000 for the full two-year period running through 2023. This grant can be utilized to conduct activities to expand, train, and sustain a response-ready public health workforce. Some of the allowable expenses include school nurses and school-based health services personnel and other positions that may be required to prevent and respond to COVID-19. And additional expenses include equipment and supplies necessary to support the expanded workforce. So this could include training opportunities, emergency management, any kind of mental health or behavioral supports that could be needed, supplies to support the school nurse or workforce in addition to other expenses as well. With COVID cases kind of on the rise and added guidance and best practices within the upcoming school year, we really would like to be able to provide added support to our schools and really provide sub-awards to support these endeavors throughout the pandemic response ongoing. So with that, I'm really happy to try to answer any questions you have as we seek your approval to apply for this grant.
Thank you. So as I'm reading this and seeing this, I'm assuming there's no match to this grant?
There's not. Nope, it's based off of our FEP tier, which is, yep.
Any other questions on this?
It's always good to have grants that require no match.
That's correct. Okay, we're going to need to act on this, though, correct?
Yep.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the supplemental funding for public workforce support. I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I was getting to the motion.
That's fine.
Just a side note on that, I wasn't real wild about doing that until I found out that it was not us that was going to have to spend the money as far as capacity. So I think once I found out that it was something that we were going to acquire this money on behalf of the schools and so forth, that made it tolerable. So I think we do want to try to pull in money when possible. The second item here is, we submitted something two years ago, and that was a request for a board's resolution. And I'm going to, Sandy's our homeless person here, so I'm going to ask her to come up and talk about that.
For the record, I do have a home. I'm not homeless.
That was my first question.
So I know we're running late, so this, we just got this request yesterday, actually, to bring it to the board, and it's due by September 3rd. So that's why the last minute request. In the past, we have authorized Lutheran Social Services to manage these funds. It's the Family Homeless Prevention Assistance Program funding. We've not had an issue with that, so we just need a resolution, again, allowing them to administer this money for our county.
New board members, you're aware of all of this and understand this, or do you need further clarification?
Yeah, I could use a little more clarification on that.
I seen it in your face.
Well, I'm new at this homeless thing again, because I haven't been homeless very long. But my understanding is a number of agencies that get together, there's a number of agencies that receive these funds. So like, Homeless Helping Homeless receives some funds, LSS remem, authorizes some, so it helps people who need maybe down payment, or not down payment, a first month's rent, that type of thing, to get into housing. The area gets $6,5,900, so it is a significant amount of money. But it's not just for Benton County. It's the St. Cloud area.
Okay.
So Lutheran Services takes care of all of that?
Yes, we don't do anything with this other than the resolution. So they gather the money. They're the fiscal hosts. They're responsible for all of it. We are not involved.
So the resolution you're looking for is just for us to?
Yep, this is whereas the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency, State of Minnesota, has authorized, undertaken this program to provide funds for homeless, family homeless prevention assistance programs, whereas Lutheran Social Services has developed an application for the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency Family Homeless Prevention Assistance Program, and whereas Lutheran Social Services has demonstrated ability to perform the required activities, now therefore let it be resolved that Lutheran Social Services is hereby authorized as the entity to be charged with administration of these funds made available.
I'll make a motion as stated by Sandy.
Second.
Okay. We got a motion, excuse me, we got a motion and a second on this resolution. Any other questions? Okay, I'll call it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Carrie's. Thank you.
Good luck in the house.
I know a Realtor.
I don't have anything else unless you have any questions. Try to get you back on track.
Any questions from the board, Bob?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
How is the, oh, sorry, wrong way.
I was going to catch you sooner or later.
So how is the new Delta variant? I mean, has there been an increase? I know.
I don't know, Jaclyn, no, she's not still here. We got an update yesterday that our numbers are continuing to increase. I can't tell you what it is, but I know that we have been deemed one of the counties that the variant is thriving in, if lack of a better word. But I think that all throughout the state and throughout the country, we're seeing this. And they're talking that this is, there's been words of horrific spreading of this and so forth. So I don't want to promote fear and things like that, but I just know that it just really is moving fast, and it's new in sight.
I was told that there was a retreat or something with a bunch of kids from like the tri-county area.
Yeah, I got a message of that yesterday where seven of the kids ended up with this COVID, and I can't remember exactly the activity, or where it was, but I know it was in Benton County. And it was seven kids that were affected by this, so.
Yeah, I personally know of two of them, so.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Don't know what to tell you, other than we just have to continue to do what we can to mitigate it.
Thanks, Bob.
Anything else for Bob? Okay, we'll adjourn the Human Services Board meeting and turn it back over to Mr. Chair.
Now we have George Fidler from Veteran Services approve the CVOS, Minnesota Optional Enforcement Grant.
Morning, Commissioners. So every year about this time, I come to the board to get you to approve a resolution to accept a grant from the State of Minnesota Veterans Affairs of $10,000. The base grant is about $7,500, and then the rest remaining is based on your veteran population, so we're going to get $10,000. I use it for newspaper ads, billboards, radio ads, software maintenance, things like these hats that I give out, say Veteran Services in the back, these pins. Folks really like these pins. It's got my name and, or my number on it here, so it helps them remember it, so it's advertising. If you folks want one of these, let me know. I'll give you one. Questions?
Questions? Pretty cut and dried. Comes before us every year, I believe.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to adopt the board resolution from the State of Minnesota, providing Benton County $10,000 to our Veteran Services organization.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the Minnesota Operational Enhancement Grant. Any other discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie.
Thank you very much, George.
Chris Byrd.
All right. Good morning Commissioners. Does anybody need a break? Because the engineer's here, and we're going to talk numbers.
I was just going to tell Mr. Chair, I hope he keeps a brief.
Usually when the engineer talks numbers, there's groans from the audience.
Yeah, right.
He's used to it.
All right. Well, I was asked to bring kind of an update on our sales tax collection. So that's what I've got here. I've got a little presentation prepared, and let's just dive right into it. So this year, we are collecting more each month than we did in the previous years. And that's what you see before you represent this, this graph. So the yellow bars are the 2020 receipts each month, and the green bars are the 2021. The orange one is that 19, because when the resolution finally got certified, it was at the end of calendar year 2019. So you can see each month in 2021, we've collected a little bit more than we did the same month in the previous year. This graph just kind of shows, kind of highlights that each month, we receive two payments from the Department of Revenue. The first one is a flat dollar amount with no cents. It's almost like as if they estimate how much we have collected or how much was paid in sales tax in Benton County. And then later in the month, about midway through the month, we receive kind of like a reconciliation. It has cents included, pennies and stuff. So this just kind of shows that we receive two payments each month. And the Department of Revenue does take out a little cut of it for their administration of it. So that's, that's the negative bars that you see on this graph here. There was in December of 2019, some startup costs. But then you see, it's, it's relatively the same amount each month. It's, I tried to relate, I tried to figure out, was it a percentage of what's collected? No, I don't know, maybe it's actual staff time, but because it's very similar each month, regardless of how much we collected in sales tax. So DOR gets their cut off the top. Well, this is kind of like what the total looked like. So in 2020, we were just over $2.5 million collected. We'll kind of get into this a little bit later, but our, the five-year plan for the next five years reflects anticipating receiving about $2.5 million of sales tax each year. So this is where we're at right now in 2020, or in 21. We're about $1.75 million collected so far. So, but we know this year, we had some county projects that were letting awarded that were going to receive sales tax. So this is what, what the balance remaining, if we didn't collect any more sales tax the rest of the year, we, I, we're anticipating that we'd have just over $1.5 million of sales tax in our local road fund balance. These are the projects that we awarded. The Millan Overlay on County Road 46, 88, and 90 down there in Sock Rapids, St. Cloud, the County Road 55 reclaiming widening, and then while we were in the area, we reclaimed County Road 79 that goes past Watteb Hall. So if we didn't, like I said, if we didn't collect any more sales tax the rest of this year, we'd still have a balance of just over $1.5 million at the end of this year.
Chris, that was after we paid for those projects?
Yes. So we haven't paid those out fully, but this is based on the awarded construction amounts, what we're but we anticipate that sales tax will continue being collected the rest of the year. So I try to take our numbers based on the difference each month that we receive and project that forward. Kind of interesting, I thought this, this graph kind of brought to light some interesting things. What we learned is the sales tax when we get received in the month that we receive it, it's based on two months prior. So February, you see a little jump. Well, you back up two months, that's December holiday spending. And then it takes a lull, then it jumps back up. I can't really explain that. I don't know why this year, from July to August, it took such a steep jump. I don't know, vacation spending, I'm not sure. So just projecting forward a similar slope of line as we did last year, but offset by the additional amount we're receiving. What does that look like at our balance? So with the construction projects this year taken out, maybe we have about $2.8 million left in our sales tax balance at the end of this year.
A point of just comment is that, I don't know if you're aware of it, but East Central Electric was charging our sales tax on electrical bills that went to agriculture. And former Commissioner Bowley brought it up to the attention of East Central that they cannot do that. And so they are going to have to be refunding sales tax that was collected since it started. So, so they may have to, there may be a lull in that somewheres. But the other part is that individuals have to apply. They're not going to do it across the board. And if you're looking at, I knew it was on mine, but I thought it was something that you had to pay. But you know, when you're talking to $5,000, $6,000 electrical bill for pumping water in June, you know, the, the sales tax on that is significant that we'll have to go back, and I'm sure that others are going to do it too.
That's, that's an excellent point. That could help explain this jump in August. If everybody was pumping water in June, that could be, so what, what's the future hold? Uh, if we see a correction later this year that brings that line back closer to 2020, it probably will.
I don't know how much of that is, you know, how big an item that is on their deal, but I know, I think mine runs about, you know, 40 bucks a month on general since they started. And then the other one, several months were going to be higher.
Because that's a good point. This half-cent sales tax for transportation is only supposed to be applied to items that were subject to sales tax before this. So generally, you know, food and clothing is exempt, and obviously agricultural things that aren't taxed before wouldn't, shouldn't be taxed with this after. So that's an excellent point. You can really get into the weeds really quickly with sales tax. A common example is lumber yards. Let's say you buy lumber for building a house for Menards over in Stearns County, but it gets delivered to a project here in Benton County. You should be paying the, the sales tax rate for Benton County, and we should be collecting it, not Stearns County, vice versa. And maybe that's what Department of Revenue does, does for us. I don't track debt. I don't, I wouldn't know how to track it. So there's a lot that goes into it. And maybe a little bit of faith that we're taking that we're collecting everything we should be, and it's only being taxed on things that should be taxed for Benton County. So a snapshot in time, looking at the data, what was now, we could be maybe $2.8 million with a balance, positive balance at the end of this year for sales tax. So I just thought maybe it'd be good to review what the sales tax can be used for. And this is referenced in statute 297A.993. It says it's enacted by a resolution by the board, but after a public hearing. Commissioner Hyden and Commissioner Pop, remember, we had that public hearing. We actually had a public, a couple informational meetings. We had one here, and then we had one in Sock Rapids, and then the, the public hearing came later. And we actually had, Monty will remember this too, we actually had two versions of the resolution that we had to send in. The first one, the Department of Revenue didn't, didn't like it, didn't think it was specific enough. And then we had to revise the resolution and had a second version that we had to adopt and send up there, and they accepted that. And I'll show that resolution here in a little bit. But statute says that you can use this sales tax proceeds for the payment of capital cost of a specific transportation project or improvement. That's one thing. The costs, capital and operating of a specific transit project. So if we had our own bus system, you know, public transit system in Benton County, that could be used for that. The capital cost of a safe routes to school program, like if we were building sidewalks and crossing lights near schools or something, we could use sales tax for that. Or the transit operating costs. It specifies that twice in, in this statute. I don't know why. And then I learned, this recent legislative session added something to this statute. So new in 2021, it says that you can use sales tax proceeds for the construction of buildings and other facilities for maintaining transportation or transit projects or improvements. So we have a fairly new highway department building, but they clarified in statute that you could use that for building a new county highway department. Or if we had our own bus garage, you could use sales tax to build that, pay for that building of that.
Chris, how about adding storage space, gold space?
I would think so. We would, the thing is, it goes back to, we would have to identify that in the resolution. So yeah, the good, good segue. Thank you, Commissioner. So this was the resolution that was adopted and accepted. And this is where Department of Revenue made us specify the project, the road, the limits, and our estimated cost. So this is the resolution that's out there now. It's about 36 projects, just under $35 million worth of projects. And so it has to say, here's a couple things that are worth noting, that the collections of the sales tax shall terminate on December 31st, 2037, or when revenues are sufficient to finance all the projects identified in this resolution, whichever occurs earlier. So theoretically, if we, we collect $35 million before 2037, and we build all these projects that are in this current resolution, that sales tax would sunset.
Mr. Chair, what is, what do they say about the amendment to this resolution?
So that has happened. There's many counties that have started collecting. They build projects, and inevitably in the public works field, another project comes along that needs to be funded. So you just need to have another public hearing and adopt a new resolution to, to add projects to that. So, or, or modify it. I was worried, this is one thing that I was very leery of, is putting costs, because we're projecting costs out 10 years. What, what is that going to look like? What are materials going to look like? And I was worried of being held to these numbers. It say, you know, we get 10 years out, and the project's 30 to 50% more expensive. Are we going to be bound to just what we identified in the resolution, and then have to come up with other funds? And what I've been reassured is that, no, they're not too worried about the costs if they come in higher. As long as it's identified in that resolution, you can still use sales tax for it. So that's, that's where we are with our, our sales tax. It's not unheard of, like I said, for counties to revisit this and adopt new resolutions. And I think maybe the back of our head, we all know that will these ever sunset? Maybe not, because there's going to be another project in 2037 that we'll probably need funding for. So.
So Commissioner Kapinski had a picture of the sign, and I seen one on, that you do, that, them are really nice signs.
They are.
Yeah, I think that was a good idea. I like to think that taxpayers are more okay paying their taxes if they can see the results of those. And that's something that we should keep doing on these projects, is identifying those. So those signs that you did see, we'll probably leave those up at least a year, and then probably move those signs to a new project that we.
Mr. Chair, how many total signs do you have right now?
We have six signs.
Okay.
So the idea would be on either end of a project, so two signs per project. So two or three projects a year, and maybe we'll need to buy a couple more.
Yeah.
Especially if we get into a longer multi-year project.
You happen to know off the top of your head what those six signs cost?
Yeah, they were, yeah, it was just right at $200 apiece. They had them made and shipped here.
That was, that's nothing. Yeah, I guess I would even, I would even look at extending them out there for a couple of years.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I, since those signs were put up in my, in my development area, I bet I had four neighbors actually asked me what that was.
Okay.
So it, and, and they were like, wow, that, that's a very good way of using these funds. They, they didn't, they had no idea.
Mr. Chair, I'd be inclined to any projects, I mean, you've got a list of five or six projects there for the year.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd have, for $200 a sign, I'd have a, I'd have signs to do each project.
Right. Sure, yeah. I think probably, I don't know if anybody's been down to the St. Cloud Airport, that would be the County Road 90. We got some down there. So that's the three signs. So 46 by Summerland.
Yep.
We got them up on County Road 55, and we have them on 90. We didn't put them up on 88 or 79, just because those are short, short sections of roadway and stuff. But yeah, we, maybe, maybe we should look at buying just more of them. Leaving these up for a couple of years while the project still looks good, I suppose. Move them around as necessary.
You know, maybe it's a thought that you tie the signs to the, to the amount of dollars. I mean, anything over 100, 100,000 or something. I, just throwing out a number.
Yeah.
It's nice to see them.
It is. It's great. I mean. I think it brings great community awareness on what is, what these funds are being used for.
And what they said they were going to be used for.
So as long as we're talking signs, and I think that's a great project. A couple of years ago, I talked about, we need to do something out on Highway 25 to recognize our public works department. That little blue sign just don't cut it for a lot of people.
Sure.
I mean, I've driven through the counties, you know, to the southwest, and they have nice signs. And we have this little
Yeah.
two by, two by 18-inch blue sign.
Okay.
So I'd appreciate if we'd at least look at the cost and look at getting something that recognizes your department a little more.
I have to admit, when I drive around and I see public, so I get a little jealous of when they have like an old pull behind grader or snowplow painted up with their, I should probably look into doing something that for us.
And we have plenty of space there.
We do, we sure, we sure do.
That would be my thought, is that, you know, and people, sometimes people can't, I mean, if they don't, you know, GPS it or something, they drive right by because they don't know what, you know, where we're at.
Yeah, that just happened to me. I had a meeting last week or the week before, and somebody, their GPS took them to State Highway 25, or no, our County Road 25. We're on State Highway 25, so, yeah.
Yeah, so I think that'd be a good idea for the county.
I just went thinking, I haven't, I added this, so this was, these most recent slides were not in the packet. But I did want to point out, in our adopted five-year plan, how that shows up, we have these three columns that shows where the projects are using sales tax are. It was a priority of the board when we adopted this, that we wanted to devote, we wanted to look at 25% of that going towards county roads specifically, 25% towards casal roads, 25% to these economic development projects, and then 25% was to provide some levy relief. That was, that was really important to, I think, the board and the public at the time. Well, if you look at what we had to get adopted by the Department of Revenue, we couldn't put in a project that said levy relief. So that's why you see only three columns when it's supposed to be 25 and 25 per each category, you want to say. Yeah, so where we see the levy relief is in that local road fund. So prior to 2021, we, we talked about this actually to my budget presentation, there was over $500,000 of levy and county program aid. If you want to consider county program levy, because it could be used for levy relief, that was being deposited into that local road fund for local road construction projects every year. Now, that's been swept away. So that's the kind of the levy relief that we were able to provide by adopting the sales tax. So there was $542,000 every year that was being set aside for county road construction projects. It's no longer being set aside. Yeah, so going back to what I mentioned at the budget presentation, there is no levy dollars being used for county road construction projects. Levy's only being used to maintain our county roads, the 105 miles of county gravel, and the 145 miles of paved road. So.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, you're talking county roads, you're including casal roads in there?
No, because casal maintenance is being reimbursed by our state aid.
Just the county ones, anything over a county road 33 numbers, right?
Correct, correct, yeah. So, and I guess you could say our overhead, you know, any overhead that the county highway department has. So, yeah, so that's kind of an update on sales tax, where we're sitting now.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to ask again, like I did last time, where are we at with ditches?
Yeah, good. Okay, I was going to provide that as an update. So our viewers, so we're going through that redetermination process and all those ditches. Our viewers have completed what they consider their viewing and land classification process. So any day now, I should be receiving their draft reports, their viewers' reports. And then, then I'll take some time and review those and see if I find any, either grammatical errors or blatant errors. But once those are in good shape, the next step would be to start setting public hearings on those each individual ditches. So the viewers can present their report on what, and what those reports will say is the value of the benefits that each of those landowners in that ditch watershed receives. Sometimes that's a big number, and that can get, get landowners excited. That doesn't mean that's the dollar they would get assessed. That just helps us determine their apportionment of repair costs. So if you, if it says that you have a $10,000 benefit, we need to look at the total benefits. That could be a million dollars of benefits, and then that apportionment is what, what that individual landowner would pay to the cleaning. That could be a million dollars of benefits and then that apportionment is what, what that individual landowner would pay to the cleaning cost, so. So hopefully, you know, here uh this week, I still receive those reports and we'll start going through those. And then the next step would be start scheduling uh public hearings.
And Chris, is, is it your intent to uh tie some ditch public hearings together or do they have to be separate?
I think so. I think that would be uh the intent. Um we, we do have a lot of ditches that we were doing this on. Um I don't know how many we could do in an individual hearing, but I like the idea of bundling them together, so we don't have so many public hearings.
So is it appropriate to start scheduling some of those public hearings, that for example, you're gonna tie six and three together? Well, you know, you need some time to review this stuff, so we get the thing on the calendar, which keeps everybody moving and.
Yeah, I like, see, hopefully, I'm anticipating that they send me a whole bun, all their reports at once. And then maybe you're right. I, I kinda have a priority in my mind and it just goes based on the timeline of when we received cleaning requests. And that first one was County Ditch Six. So that's the one I like to see go first.
I guess my thought process is, is you know it's gonna take you two weeks to review this. I'm, I'm just throwing that number out. And there should be no reason why three to four weeks out, we can't be having a public hearing scheduled already.
Sure.
Instead of waiting for you to review it and then schedule it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Yeah, yeah, that's a, that's a good idea, so. Well, because we'll have public, we'll have to uh public notification requirements and all that, so.
And that this all takes time.
Yeah.
You know, and I wanna make sure we're giving you enough time, obviously, to do your thing.
Sure.
But you kinda know that and so maybe you can bring back some public hearing dates for us.
Yeah, hopefully at the next board meeting, yeah, which should be our first one in September, yeah.
And the sooner we get going, you know, a couple of these been on the docket for quite some time and it would be nice if we could get them let before winter months.
I agree. I hear that too, uh and I share some of the same frustrations. It's dry now. It'd be nice to be moved right now.
I just had a call last night, which I need to talk to you about.
Sure, so.
And I think you looked at it already.
I did, that's why, probably the one I went out and looked at yesterday, so.
Could be, yep. So I think that would be good if we could get, you know, a couple of these let before winter, so that, you know, we'll get a better, we're, we're gonna get a better bid. And we owe that to the taxpayers that are foot in the bill, to get this done in a timely fashion and, and in a fashion that gives them the best bang for their dollar.
And that's why I think if we're progressive with our timelines, you know, just keep.
Yeah.
Instead of waiting for something, then acting, then waiting, then acting.
Yeah.
There is one, I know one of them, the concerns came up on the ditch fourteen. And if we remember the process, ditch fourteen brought up the concerns with ditch nine, which was downstream. And we all, I think all agreed that we should look at ditch nine, the downstream one, before doing the upstream one, so. Um, yeah. Like a lot of things that we do, we just can't get to it fast enough for, for the public, so. But I think you're right, Commissioner. If we are aggressive with our timeline and show that we're still moving forward, hopefully that appeases a lot, so.
Get out. Thank you, Chris.
Yep, thanks. Um I did have, I was gonna provide an update, but I can bring that to next meeting if we're concerned about time or uh so.
I had one com-
Sure.
Constituent complaint, and we talked about before about the um County Road Three. And when, when was the last time that that was updated? The, the part right from Sock Rapids on to the nor- towards the north?
Oh, so let's uh, at the eastern edge of Sock Rapids, all the way out towards Arkansas Four, Poppa Creek area, that stretch. So two thousand and seven, that received an overlay. So, and that is in our five-year plan, but not until, I think, twenty twenty-four. So, and it's scheduled to get a, a full-depth reclamation and pave the gravel shoulders at that time, so.
Yeah, the, and the person complaining said it hadn't been done since nineteen ninety-two. And I took a road trip on theirs, is, that's pretty darn smooth for nineteen ninety-two.
It did receive a, a maintenance overlay in two thousand and seven, so um yeah, even that overlay is starting to, to age out. There's a lot of cracks and stuff on it, but yeah.
Yeah, but then I drove all the way up to the north end and saw the one that's being done next year. That one definitely needs to be done. It's.
That's right, yeah.
So yeah, I feel that needs to be done before the other, but yeah, you need, do need to finish. And there, there was some of the areas where that had housing that was already, has the tar on the side of the road that the rest needs to be done when we, we do.
That's exactly right. Yeah, so yeah, if you need to, you tell your constituent that it is scheduled in our five-year plan to, to do that, so.
Yeah, she want it done next year, but.
Sure.
They all do.
Yeah, they do, yeah.
Yeah, it wasn't, they don't want it done next.
She's been asking for years, I, I guess, but yeah, two thousand and seven, not nineteen ninety-two, so. It didn't look that bad. It was pretty smooth writing.
Sure, good, good to hear.
Okay.
All right, you need anything else?
Thank you, Chris.
Yep. Commissioner, meeting updates?
I'll start and make it quick. I had uh only the planning commission, which you've heard about from Roxanne. I just, you know, again, asked her to bring those things that we don't typically see. And then obviously, we had our budget meeting, so that's really all I had since our last meeting.
Okay, Beth?
Oh, let's see, um I had a first steps meeting last week. Talking about all the people that they've been helping and it keeps increasing monthly for people they're helping and it's, the program's been going good and they hope to keep it going. And I think I had my. I had a two-day session with. Figure out what they call these, the M A W B board. And. They talked about the impact of COVID nineteen on the labor, the labor force. And just working on education and making sure that the people are getting employed, the career one and um. They're just doing a fantastic job on increasing our workforce and productivity in the area. Yeah, pages and pages of notes.
That's it?
I think that was, oh, on, was it Thursday night? I went to the Joint Powers Board for St. Cloud and the APO. And um they had a opening for an appointment on one of the other boards. It wasn't Highway twenty-three, it was the other one, but yeah, Paul Brandmeier.
For APO?
Yeah. Paul Brandmeier got that. You guys evidently didn't show up that night, so you might've gotten an appointment if you'd have been there.
Uh I talked to Brian about that.
Go ahead.
No, I talked to Brian. I was uh uh working on some other committee meetings and Commissioner Johns, or Commissioner uh Hyman was also busy. So um I talked to Brian up before that meeting and let him know that we wouldn't be there and, and stuff like that, so.
Okay.
I'm working on, they're gonna have the, working with the Highway twenty-three and then they have this other board they're working with. Just trying to keep up with the needs for transportation in the area.
Okay. Mister Hyman?
Uh we had our solid waste advisory committee last night. Uh the only thing we had to act on is we kept it at the ten dollars per unit service fee. And we're gonna keep doing that. Uh that service fee would help pay for a landfill or something if they had issues. So we're gonna keep.
That's a ten-dollar fee on the taxes, right?
Correct.
Do we have an option as a county for that?
Excuse me?
Do we have an option as a county for that? I thought that was more state mandated.
Goes.
That's a local decision.
Well, it's a local decision, okay.
Through our board to decide if we want to maintain it or raise it or lower it. And with the issues that could be coming forth in the next fifteen to twenty years, uh we elected to keep it on board because it could take anywhere from three to four mil to fix.
And is this per parcel?
Per parcel, by the fact, yep.
I think the county's been there, did that with the Morrison County landfill once about a time.
Yeah, yep. Uh and then we had uh huh. Where else? Uh that's all.
Okay, just elaborating on that, uh there is a, a, a little bit of a surplus in that fund. But that could be depleted very quickly with one of these projects. Just a couple of things, um uh went to obviously the um Baton County Farmer of the Year. Very good job, Mister uh Commissioner Johnson. That was a very good presentation, so thank you for doing that. Um we had lots of uh budget meetings. That was a very uh intriguing to see all the numbers that go. I mean, seriously, for me, I deal with, with numbers a lot and that was a lot of numbers. So it, it, that was a lot of work over those three days.
Oh, it's gonna get worse.
Yeah. Um I had a ton of other meetings, uh as we talked about. I wasn't able to attend the APO meeting, but I did let uh Brian know our views on what we were looking for. Um MICA meeting, I jumped in right at the last minute, uh and I don't know if you've seen that.
I, I was unable to get, I was committed. I just couldn't get there at one o'clock.
Yep, and they just moved our next meeting to the eighth.
I seen that.
And that's our soil and water tour. That takes all day.
Yep.
So, I mean, if we may, one of us might have to just bow and.
It's gonna be pretty tough because we're out in the boat at one o'clock.
Exactly, so um worst case scenario, I can fall and then jump on this, so. Other than that, that's about it.
That's one of the problems, is that everyone's rescheduling meetings and now they're overlapping all of the other meetings, so it's kinda hard to get to them all.
Yep.
Okay. Um I didn't have anything, I was, other than budget and then uh MICA, so I was pretty quiet for a point, point in time there.
For once, huh?
Okay.
Yeah.
Monty.
We're running cassette committees at home?
Yep.
We don't have any? All right.
You know, yeah, I may have nothing new. I know uh Commissioner had had some conversations about um. Did you wanna uh perhaps look at in more detail at some departments and some of their operating budgets and so on and so forth? And, and in advance of having your September twenty-second meeting, do you wanna have some more in-depth conversations with some departments about their major operating accounts? Uh if you were to look at some reductions, how would that affect those departments? So I just wanted to bring that up because we had talked about that possibly. Do you need more time to have some additional meetings, perhaps with just a few departments who have the bigger operating budgets? So, did you wanna elaborate there?
I thought this would be beneficial, at, at least for the new commissioners, uh to get an understanding of, I think it was three departments we looked at that have the biggest budgets and how it would infect, you know, impact them, whether we add or, or not add to each.
Yeah, otherwise the day's gonna be pretty long.
Correct.
To get all that on one day with.
So as much information as you can get ahead of time before that day would be very beneficial.
Okay, when are you thinking? I know you're gone most of September, or a lot of September.
Well, it's gotta be, yeah. I haven't thought about that yet.
Budget is on the twenty-second, right?
When do you leave?
Right, so our, our budget work session was scheduled for the twenty-second. It's not a lot of days in my calendar that work prior to that. Right, so.
And, and Steve being.
All right, what's the last week of this month look like?
We uh.
Monty, you're taking a vacation.
Well, I'll, I'll be back uh Tuesday, September seventh.
So are we looking in September then?
Yeah, so.
And Steve's gone.
And that's fine. I don't have to be here for those presentations of those, you know.
Okay, so.
I, I really wanted the new commissioners to have a better understanding of how this would impact.
So you've got uh that meeting on the twenty-second, uh is there, are there any more days that week? That we could also set another budget work session for and just, you know, um use them as necessary. Um so it looks like County Board meeting is of course the twenty-first.
I guess my opinion is, and without looking at the calendar here, it should be the week prior, so we can have some time to chew on it. Week of the thirteenth, I, I don't know when that would.
So you've got the.
Basically the thirteenth, fourteenth, because the fifteenth, sixteenth, seventeenth is.
AMC policy, that's AMC policy, right?
I can't do it on the fourteenth.
I can't either.
Yeah, what about, uh we got, we got a call with.
Monday, the twentieth?
I guess that'd leave us two days to chew on it.
What about, what about after the board meeting on the seventh? How long, I mean.
Yeah, we could try and condense our board meeting a little bit.
Do you have anything that you know of that's a large event coming up on the seventh, Monty, for a regular board meeting? That would extend the meeting for any reason?
Yeah, um I know a man that needs to have an EDA meeting to talk about this loan that you're gonna talk about this afternoon. Nothing's jumping out at me right now as a huge issue for the seventh, no, other than the ED-ish. And that shouldn't be a long EDA meeting, just to consider an extension of an existing loan.
How long would you expect the call to last for the hu- human services on the thirteenth?
Really, usually Bob can fill up two hours. Is that one of the standing ones?
Yeah.
Yeah, he can easily fill up a couple of hours.
Twentieth would work for me, I guess if that's the.
Monday, the twentieth, okay.
Nine o'clock?
Sure, okay. Nine twenty at nine. And we were thinking we'd, we would schedule then Human Services, Highway and Sheriff's Office to come in. And I think that the, the, the goal is to really talk about their me driving uh accounts. Pose the question, well, if you had to make some reductions here, how would it affect your ability to function and so on? And that would be a good time for them to review their policies, your requests too.
Right, so you were talking reductions on the current budget or reductions on what they proposed?
Well, everything what they proposed to see how it would fit into the budget.
If, for example, let's just say, for example, you wanna get this base budget level increased down. Then it means looking at their current budget.
Right.
Their current operating accounts. How would that affect them? And it also might be a good time to ask them, okay, you've asked for these policy issues. What's your highest priority? You know, what, what are the ones you really think you absolutely must have? Get some sense of priority.
Okay.
So sure, yep.
All right.
Yep, so I'll, I'll schedule those three departments then, then for that.
Or the twentieth at nine o'clock.
Yep, okay. And I think that's probably good too, because there's a pretty long gap between the presentations you just heard and the twenty-second. So it helps refresh your memories about a few things. Anything to, uh, uh, if, if a department asks for multiple policy issues, I wanna ask them to give me some sense of priority too.
All right.
Which ones are your most critical, or you absolutely, you know, why those should be funded? That would be useful. So ninth, so December twen- excuse me, September twentieth at nine for a budget work session. And then we'll have another one on the twenty-second at nine. One thing I just wanna add, uh, add is I think when we scheduled the tour of practices last time, we didn't really have the exact start time. And as you'll see on the, on the current listing, it's, they ask you to, to arrive at nine and then the bus leaves at nine thirty. So just so you're there by nine thirty to jump on the bus, um it would be necessary to arrive before nine. They usually have coffee and donuts at nine and then a bus leaves at nine. And I believe we've, we've RSVP'd for you all to attend the tour of practices on the eighth.
Okay. Anything else?
What was the tour for this afternoon? Is there one? Is that here?
I don't have anything on my calendar.
Farm tour for Emslander Farms.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is the, uh, yeah, excuse me. That's the farm tour at uh the part, the Fireman Oak Park.
Yep.
Emslander Farm.
Right, it's put on by extension.
It's being run by extension, yep. That starts at one.
Yes.
One thirty, yep, yep. So that's how we had.
All right, motion?
Motion, go ahead.
Motion approved call.
Second.
Motion's been made and sent. Approve the calls out in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have to conduct a, need a motion to go in a closed session.
Motion to go in closed session, second.
Motion's been made and second to go in closed session, all in favor?
Aye.
Carried.
And I just wanna mention for the record, Mr. Chair, is uh, uh, the, the statute requires that we reference specifically the parcels that'll be discussed in closed session. And this will be the parcel here in, in, two parcels here in Foli, we call the old high school property across the street from us here. And then we call the court facility property adjacent to our court facility owned by Great River Federal Credit Union. So those would be the parcels discussed in the closed session today.
All right.